Commissioners, this is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Whoa, man. Strike two. I know. I've probably done that about eight times.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today. Before I begin today's meeting, we normally have an invocation from Pastor Jason Van De Veer. I don't see him here in the room with us unless somehow he has escaped us. So with that, we'll just stop for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, January 28th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of this agenda?
You do, sir. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
No, sir. Negative, no.
And neither do I. Thank you, gentlemen. With that, we'll move on to item two. We do have a fun ceremony and proclamation for today, and it's the Roundup Riders of the Rockies Check Presentation. And do we have somebody here from Roundup Riders? I see Dan Dirz.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Dirz with Open Space. I got Matt Wassum here today. Normally, we see Kim Harbaugh here. Kim had to do a quick emergency work trip, so he's not able to make it today, but he does send his regards to you all. The Roundup Riders of the Rockies are partners of Douglas County for many, many years. They have, on a yearly basis, contributed to the open space program through generous donations throughout the years. They are a group that has embraced the kind of American Western heritage, that cowboy-type feel is something that they look to embrace. So they've been wonderful to have on our open space properties and really showing what good equestrian use looks like. So they're great ambassadors along our trail system. And with that, I'm going to let Matt do some of his own speech there for you all.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. It's a real privilege to represent the Roundup Riders of the Rockies here today. Roundup Riders of the Rockies was started in 1948, so almost 80 years ago. Many of you may know some of our members and neighbors and friends of the organization. We have a wide variety. We cast a pretty big net, and we raise some money for college scholarship funds, underprivileged needs. But in early 1980s, the Roundup Riders came to the realization that appropriation for federal trail funding was less than what we really needed it to be in the West. And so the 501(c)(3) was established, called the Heritage and Trails Group. And I'm here today representing Heritage and Trails, presenting a check to you. It's easy to get our membership behind donating money to Douglas County because the Board of Commissioners and our citizens are behind open space in this county. We've done a phenomenal job creating open space opportunities for all uses, biking, hiking, horseback riding, and our membership really appreciates everybody's commitment to open space. It's produced very high quality of life here in the county, and thanks for the chance to be up here with you today and for all that you do here in the county for open space and trail access. So with that, I present you a check. It's easy to get airtime if you're handing over checks up here. I found it.
Well, and I'll have you pause, Matt. Thank you so much and our best to Kim Harbaugh and everyone else with Roundup Riders. Let me open it up to the board for any comments.
Well, first and foremost, Matt, thanks so much to the Roundup Riders for keeping us in mind, pitching in to help out on the upkeep of trails here in the county. But also, I just want to remind my colleagues, Mr. Wassum here and Kim Harburg both partnered up to do two really important things over the last couple of years. Number one, they bought the Equestrian Center down at Bell Mountain Ranch, which was really in a state of, well, it was challenged. It was challenged. God bless the owner. She was a wonderful, wonderful lady, but it became a little too much for him, for her. Obviously, Matt and Kim came in with a really neat business idea. Matt moved the saddle shop down here into the county, which is nationally recognized saddlery operation, and just did more to, once again, invest in the county. And then, knowing the folks in Bell Mountain Ranch, they're neighbors of mine, the way I do, I know they really appreciated y'all coming in and helping to kind of bring the Equestrian Center back on its feet into what was really hoped and planned for. So he's not only here investing in the county on behalf of the Roundup Riders, but he himself has stepped forward with Kim to make an investment in the future of Douglas County that just kind of shows the quality citizen and the quality business partner with the county that you are.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well said. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle?
No, I'm just thrilled and happy that you're here today. Wish there were a few more, in fact, because the Roundup Riders are such an important part of the historic nature of Douglas County and also the future of Douglas County, as was expressed by Commissioner Teal. So thank you for being here today and look forward to a continued relationship between the county and the Roundup Riders.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would agree. And just echoing my colleagues, just a perfect example, as Dan said, of great equestrian use and folks that are doing it the right way. So thank you for that. I think we're going to come down to you. You're our boss, not the other way around. So we're going to come down and take a photo with you, okay?
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Just kidding.
Yeah, that's wonderful. We appreciate the Roundup Riders. So with that, we'll move on to item three of our business meeting today, which is our consent agenda. And I will first ask if there's any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Any citizen comment? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close the citizen comment on the consent agenda and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve requests in all items A through AM on the consent agenda. Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries three zero. With that, we'll move on to item four, which is our regular agenda items for today. And the first item is item four, A, a quitclaim deed conveying Sterling Ranch filing one tract P to the Douglas County School District, project file MI 2025-002. Jeanette Baer, Planning Manager, presenting for staff. Hi, Jeanette.
Good afternoon. Yeah, Jeanette Baer, representing Planning Services. I'll be providing a quick overview of this request. Rich Cosgrove and Jackie Millay are also here, representing the district, and they may have something to say a little bit later.
Jackie Millay. I'll correct that on the record.
Oh, Millay, sorry. I apologize. I only met her for the first time a few weeks ago, and it was over Teams, right? So anyway.
Yep, she's brand new, but.
The school district has petitioned the board to convey a 12.51-acre school site to the district for development of an elementary school in Sterling Ranch. The site will be conveyed via quitclaim D. The proposed elementary school is for a pre-K through sixth grade facility and is projected to be opened by the 2027-2028 school year. The school will serve Sterling Ranch residents, along with residents within other portions of northwest Douglas County. In 2015, the site was conveyed via plat dedicated to the county for a future school as part of Sterling Ranch filing one. This fall, voters approved a ballot measure to fund construction of the school. In late December, the school district petitioned the county for conveyance of the site in accordance with state statutes in the Douglas County subdivision resolution. A critical need for the school on this site is noted in the district's petition letter, their capital plan, and their bond plan. The site's located in the northwest portion of Douglas County in the Sterling Ranch PD. This is an aerial. You can see the tract is generally located at the intersection of Piney River and Taylor River Streets, south of Titan Road, and west of the Sterling Ranch Center. This is a concept plan that was provided by the district, showing the proposed site plan layout for the school. The school will be subject to the county's 30-day location and extent process. The district has completed the required precinctal meeting for the alley and anticipates a formal application submitted sometime in February or March. This is another view of the concept plan, looking west over the site. You can see the playfield in the foreground, and that will also be available for the Sterling Ranch community to use. These are a few photos, just for context. This is looking south and east over the 12-acre site. You can see the Sterling Ranch Center kind of in this area, along with the silo that's on the north side of Titan Road. This is looking south and west over the site. In this slide, you can see some of the nearby Sterling Ranch residences. The next two slides show a couple of the major roads that bound the site that will provide access to the school. This is looking south down Blue River, and this is looking south down Piney River. And you can see the Sterling Ranch cab office, which is temporarily occupying a corner of the site in this photo as well. In staff's assessment, the quitclaim deed may be approved. The site was dedicated to the county for a future school, and a petition has been received from the school district demonstrating a need for the property. This concludes my presentation. District staff is here. If you have any questions, or they might want to say a few words, and now that I know Jackie Millay's correct pronouncing of her last name.
Well, Jeanette, thank you for that. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll turn it over to the district.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Richard Cosgrove, Chief Operations Officer. I can't thank you enough for the opportunity, for your consideration for this agenda item, and I would like to thank Board of County Commissioners and all of the residents of Douglas County for this opportunity to be able to afford a great educational opportunity in this area of our wonderful county. We already have almost 800 preschool through sixth graders that live in this area. We're growing by about 200 a year. The school has been identified for several years in our master capital plan and fortunately is included in our bond plan. And with me, we have Jackie Millay, our bond director, and we're happy to answer any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. And if we could just pause for a moment, I've been informed that you might be making some changes after many, many years of service. And on behalf of the county, we just wanted to thank you for those decades of public service commitment. It's deeply significant to us, and although not everyone will recognize the legacy you left behind, we certainly do and appreciate that.
Thanks, sir. That means so much. And 25 years in the Air Force and 24 in public education, two great causes. It's been an absolute pleasure.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Let me open it up to the board for any questions of either staff or the applicant.
No questions for Colonel Cosgrove.
No questions for me either.
And would anybody else from the school district like to share anything with us?
Commissioner, you know, I haven't met a microphone I didn't like. First of all, again, I just want to say a huge thank you, and thank you for acknowledging the tremendous work of Mr. Cosgrove. He has been a phenomenal asset to this community and to the Douglas County school system, and not many can have that legacy of tenure. I am in an exciting new role, thrilled to be a part of continuing to build strong communities in Douglas County. I think that foundationally, our schools are an important element to that, and as was demonstrated by Mr. Cosgrove, there's significant need in this portion of the county for a new elementary school, and I'm looking forward to continuing to serve and build that school.
Great. Well, I had a hidden agenda with having you come up, and I would also like to recognize you. And on a personal level, you know, going into my seventh year as a commissioner, I think back many years to the first time that I encountered you as mayor of my fair city in my district, the mayor of Longtree. And again, your legacy and commitment to our region is very well-known, and I know we've had an opportunity to recognize you publicly a few times, but I'd be remiss if we didn't do that again today. And congratulations on your new post as bond counsel. Let me ask again, any questions for the staff or the applicant on this matter?
Oh, so many questions for former Mayor Millay.
Appropriate questions for the site, sir.
No questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Winkle?
No question.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. I just want to compliment and extend gratitude to the Board of Education and the school district, really tremendous staff and great board members over there. I've been intimately aware of these conversations for many years, and I believe that this is a site that is overdue for this particular institution, so I'm really pleased to hear more. I'll reserve any vote for citizen comment, but thank you so much. So if there's no further questions, I will open it up for citizen comment. Any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none. Troy, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, first and foremost, thanks so much for the folks at Sterling Ranch for taking this action today, and thanks so much for the folks at the school district. I can assure you, after many, many years of hearing the comments from the area, this is a school that's needed. We, I think it will be greeted by many that you are taking this action in order to start moving towards the building of this new school that is needed in one of the fastest-growing communities, not just in the county, but really in the entire state. So with that said, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve a quitclaim deed conveying Sterling Ranch filing one tract P to the Douglas County School District, project file is MI 2025-002.
And I will second that motion. I will also add that it's a very happy day for me to see that this is before us here. Very much looking forward to August of 2027 and very excited for the Sterling Ranch community, which continues to grow, and this will be a key part of it, right there, right in the middle, so very exciting.
Well said, Commissioners. We have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries three zero. Congratulations. So with that, we'll move on to item four B, which is a public contract for services with TransAero LTD for the exclusive use helicopter services for the Office of Emergency Management and Purchase Order for approved $1,530,000 budget line item. Mike Alexander, our new Director of Emergency Management, presenting for staff. Hi, Mike.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. It is my honor to present this item for your consideration. This, if you choose to approve it, will be the third renewal of our contract with TransAero LTD for helicopter wildfire support services. If you'll bear with me, I do have a slideshow designed to show you what we're talking about, give you a brief recap of our accomplishments from 2024, and discuss what we're talking about today in request for your approval. Douglas County Helotech is a one-of-a-kind service that we provide here, funded by you all, Board of County Commissioners, to the citizens of Douglas County. We are the only county and local-operated helotech wildfire support team in the state of Colorado. It has paid huge dividends, and we believe that this service has been wildly successful in mitigating our wildfire threat to the citizens of Douglas County. As you well know, wildfire is rated out as the number-one natural hazard facing our residents, and this is one tool in our large toolbox of how we answer that problem and mitigate that risk. Our selected vendor, who we've utilized for the last several years, and we anticipate continuing that relationship with, is TransAero LTD. They're a company based out of Loveland, Colorado, in the Fort Collins Loveland Airport. They provide us the helicopter itself, as well as pilot, mechanic, fuel truck driver, and associated vehicles to go along with that resource. We, Douglas County, provide an elite team of wildland firefighters seated in the back over there, who I'd be remiss not to acknowledge, are joining us today. Specialized wildland firefighters that are designed to work with helicopters in tandem to produce maximum effectiveness in putting out wildfires hard, heavy, and fast. That is the ship we contract with and the folks that we utilize. That's a mix of our full-time employees from the sheriff's office, the emergency services unit, as well as supported by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Wildland Fire Team, which, again, is an industry-leading service that we provide to the citizens by co-training deputy sheriffs as wildland firefighters. Our mission is to respond hard, heavy, and fast to wildfires throughout Douglas County and to assist our neighbors when possible. That's what it looks like when our folks get in the helicopter and respond to a wildfire. We are well-known for having the fastest response in the region. We are typically in the air within 10 minutes of being notified of a wildfire in the county. This is generally what it looks like when we arrive on scene. Our first mission is to size up the incident, get a good aerial view of what's going on, talk to incident commanders and operational folks on the ground, give a size up, coordinate the mission, both for our aviation resource as well as our ground team. Those pictures are from this last summer on the Quarry Fire in Jefferson County. That's what it looked like. We were the first aviation resource to arrive on scene the morning after it started, and were first to go operational in helping put that fire out. Once we land on the ground after we've coordinated our mission, our team gets out of the helicopter, gears up for hand crew firefighting work, and they work in tandem with our helicopters, you see in the right picture. That really is what we talk about in helotech operations and why we're so effective. We have folks that are well-trained in going where engines can't go, getting water where it needs to go, and doing the hard work of putting out fires by hand to save lives and Aviation suppresses, firefighters extinguish, again, reiterating the point of why we combine firefighters with helicopters. Nobody does it alone. The firefighters need aviation to cool down the fire so we can get up close to it, and the firefighters and the helicopter can't put out the fire itself. So firefighters or helicopters, when they get on scene, are able to cool down that fire, but they never fully extinguish it. It requires, like you see the picture on the left, folks to get in there and do the dirty work, spending hours of turning that dirt and ash and flame over by hand with hand tools and chainsaws to make sure that fire remains out, doesn't rekindle and cause a later event. Briefly covering our accomplishments from 2024, we flew 103 total aviation missions. Thirty-two of those were in direct response to wildfires. Twenty-two wildfires responded to in Douglas County, and I'm proud to say, most people in this room probably never heard of those fires. And I'd like to tell you that a large part of that, not, certainly not 100%, but a large part of that is due to the effectiveness of this resource. We also helped out our neighbors in adjoining counties with 10 out-of-county fires, which were fully reimbursed to the county. They didn't cost the taxpayers of Douglas County a single penny. And in fact, I have some more good news on that to share in a couple of slides. We also responded to 11 smoke reports. We receive smoke reports primarily in the Pike National Forest, whether recreators, people out that see smoke in the woods, sometimes it ends up being dust. We also get smoke reports from AI-based fire detection cameras that our utility partners sponsor and share that information with us, and we fly to those smokes and determine if they're valid, not valid, if they're a real fire, and we base our actions based on what we find. We also responded to one all-hazard mission, which was a downed aircraft that our helicopter helped locate in a difficult-to-access open space area. Like any good resource, training, you practice like you play. So training is a critical component of our operation, and we flew 59 training missions this year. These are some statistics. It was a record-setting year for our program by all accounts. You can see 2023 statistics on the top row and 2024 in the gold, and the asterisks just denote record-setting statistics for that category, based on our program duration since 2018, which is when we started contracting for exclusive use helicopter operations in Douglas County. It was a very active year. We flew many hours. We dropped 652 tanks of water on those fires, flew to 32 fires, had 92 hours of direct fire suppression operations in the air, and conducted significant training. All categories were increases from the previous year. So this is what I mentioned as far as a financial win-win and a great source of efficiency for us. Unplanned availability savings represents those times that we flew to fires outside of Douglas County. And not only do we get reimbursed for those expenses, but we're able to actually pass on planned costs. So we budget for a daily availability fee for a helicopter that we pay to our vendor. When we fly to those fires outside of the county, we pass on those planned costs because the helicopter isn't here in Douglas County for that duration, so we're able to pass on those planned costs to those receiving incidents, thereby saving us money based on our budget. What you see in the second row is our unplanned in-country response. Those were those 22 wildfires we flew to in Douglas County. Those, we don't budget for wildfires. We never know really what a wildfire season's going to hold for us. So it cost us $75,000 to put out those 22 fires in Douglas County. We saved $87,000. It cost us $75,000. So not only did helping our neighbors pay for incident response within the county, we were able to bank and roll that back into additional costs and into forward budget years. We think that's a pretty phenomenal story. It's good business to help our neighbors in many cases on those adjacent borderline fires in Jefferson County, Rappahoe County, Albert County. We're able to help stop those fires before they become a Douglas County incident. This is a graph showing our wildfire response since 2018. Again, the trend line shows that we do expect this trend to continue of increasing wildfire response. Clearly, 2024 was a significant year for wildfire. We were dry. We had numerous starts, both human and natural cause, and it was just an overall active year. We don't know what '25 and '26 are going to hold for us, but it seems to hold that the trend will continue. And so based on that, we have before you today an opportunity to approve an extension of the helicopter contract. The current 2025 budget currently holds a line item of $1.53 million to support that program. That full amount provides us financial flexibility and operational decision support that you've provided us so that we can spend the taxpayers' dollars wisely and effectively when the fire conditions warrant specifically. Adding, we've added an amendment to the contract this year for modified availability. What that is, is another tool in our contract toolbox to allow us to bring that helicopter on during what we might normally or in the past call our off-season months. So when we're not on exclusive use, we have a contract modification that allows us to pay our vendor to be on ready notice from their base in Loveland. They can launch on moments' notice and be here within 30 minutes, or we can bring them down here and have them go on short-term temporary exclusive use right here in the county during months, say like December, January, February, where we might need them during those brief windows of elevated fire danger that we sometimes experience here in the front range. This year, we're guaranteeing the vendor, as part of this contract, 168 days of exclusive use. Again, exclusive use is when the helicopter's here in the county, seven days a week, available for a minimum of nine hours a day, ready to launch within 10 minutes and get to any scene within Douglas County. to any scene within Douglas County within another 10 to 15 minutes of airtime. Overall, with your support, commissioners, and with this contract amendment, we're able to say we effectively have access to helicopter support year-round here in Douglas County. No other county in Colorado can say that. No other county, in my professional opinion, doing this for 25 years, can say that we're as well-protected and that we're doing as much as we are, as much as you are, for the citizens of the county in protecting lives and property. This program is fully supported by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the Douglas County Wildfire Action Collaborative, and all of the fire districts within Douglas County, who see this as a significant benefit and are honored and pleased to continue supporting it. And I thank you for everything you've done, and I hope you'll consider approving for 2025.
Well, Mike, thank you so much. This is a historic day for Douglas County, and I want to begin by congratulating you on your elevation as the new Director of Emergency Management. I know you've heard from the Sheriff's Office and from us and all of our partners how thrilled we are by your leadership and to have somebody with your heroism and commitment to serve at the helm. So thank you for that. This is near and dear to my heart, and I have to extend credit to my colleagues, to Commissioner Van Winkle and to Commissioner Teal, because as I often say, no commissioner can do anything alone. But both of you, your commitment to our citizens to ensure that their properties, their families, their animals are protected is deeply significant. That statistic that 32 ventures out have occurred, 10 of which have been out-of-county, and we're getting reimbursed for all of those, is tremendous. We were just in Washington, DC, sharing that statistic everywhere. And the reality is, again, we are the only county in the state that has that dedicated helitack team. And I share your perspective. We're really honored to have all of you here, and if you would, please stand so we could give you a round of applause. You know, Mike, you shared with us at the Wildfire Action Collaborative years ago now that one square mile in Douglas County is about $101 million in property values. With the Pike National Forest, we're about 50% open space. So this proactive measure, this very small investment compared to the property values out there, is something that we consistently hear from citizens as widely supported and helpful for them. Many don't realize that this is also economic development. We just landed a $20 billion aerospace company called Safron in Parker. And one of the reasons that these businesses come to Douglas County is because their investment is protected. They don't want to build buildings that are going to go up in smoke that they can't insure. So from a business development standpoint, it's fantastic. I remember very vividly being at the Chatridge Two Fire on the scene, passing out waters with the Red Cross as families were seeing their homes with smoke blooms right above them. And because of the great work of your team, that community was saved. But that was the beginning of the Wildfire Action Collaborative, and I think we all said, "Never again." So knock on wood, we'll continue to venture forward. But let me open it up to the board for any additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is an exciting day for Douglas County and very much appreciate your leadership in emergency management. And we are tremendously honored today by the presence of our brave firefighters who join us, who have saved the people and property of Douglas County more than we will ever know. And really, not just even Douglas County, but across the front range, as we heard today, 32 or 22 fires put out in Douglas County. Any one of those could have become a monster, and it could have become very deadly, the people and property of Douglas County. And we heard also 652 water dumps onto those fires that put them out. So by hitting fires early and heavy, as you said, it really does make such a huge difference to the people of Douglas County. And I just can't thank you enough for being here. Very exciting day for us that we will have year-round coverage now for the people of Douglas County. And we need to look no further than any news story, top headline of the last couple of weeks, to know how important this is and how valuable it is to the people of Douglas County. So, thank you.
Very well said, Commissioner. Commissioner Teal?
Well, I don't have any questions for Mike. This is all consistent with the budget briefing when we agreed to this allocation in this year's budget. And I'm going to go ahead and hold my comments until after public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Any citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none in the room, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the public contract for service with TransAero Limited for the exclusive use of helicopter services for the Office of Emergency Management and purchase order for approved $1.53 million budget line item.
You know, I know that there are many folks that would look at this and say, $1.5 million is a lot. But I always go back to, you know, what do we have a government for? I mean, okay, we need to run our elections because we still call ourselves a republic, and we try to be a republic. But otherwise, you know, it goes back to the Constitution. The purpose of government in America is provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty. That's why we have government. This is kind of both of those two, because this is the common defense, providing this wildfire defense for our county and obviously for our neighbors, which, you know, thank you to our current regulatory scheme we get reimbursed on. And then, of course, Commissioner, you said it so very well in terms of this is providing for our economic well-being of the county. And so in a full budget that's running right around $815 million for this year, I think $1.5 million is a bargain. It is something I'm really glad we're able to make use of. You know, Mike, I'm really glad we increased the ground crew allocation, given how we're seeing that number go up. And so with that, I'm happy to second.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion?
No, Mr. Chair. I would like to point out, though, that this is such centrally located that it's not only important for us here in Douglas County, but for really all of, for all our state of Colorado. It's something that I think we need to just continue to look at and work with our surrounding partners.
I agree. And as leaders, we're charged with representing nearly 400,000 people, and we're not done. We just, as I said, we're out in DC having active conversations on how to not only rest on our laurels, but continue to be even better. And I know, as one commissioner, I'm not going to stop until we have that year-round support located right here in Douglas County and get some congressional support and maybe some dollars our way to support that. But I just want to thank everyone for their leadership and their partnership, the Wildfire Action Collaborative for their support, and absolutely the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. So any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations. Thank you, Mike. And actually, I don't know if Drew is here, but Caroline, did you want a photo? Okay, let's do this. So let's come down, and maybe if we can have our helitack team join us up here.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Good to meet you. Good to see you. I'm going down this. Mike, you can get in here, too.
No, no. They're the real workers. This is our emergency. Mike, get in here.
I almost got out.
Nice try. Here we go. One, two. Thank you. Appreciate it. That was good work. Take care. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Well, that makes me very happy, and I'm sure many of our citizens as well. So with that, we'll move on to Item 4C, which is a public contract for services between Douglas County and Forstgrun Associates in the amount of $578,360. DJ Beckwith, Principal Planner, presenting, not DJ, Katie today. Hi, Katie.
Apologies, Commissioners.
No problem.
Every once in a while, I do like to get up here in front of you. Katie Carter, representing Community Development. The item before you this afternoon is a contract for service with Forstgrun Associates to serve as a consultant to the county to develop the 2050 Douglas County Water Conference of Master Plan. The contract marks the culmination of a year-long process with the Water Commission. Throughout 2024, staff worked with the Water Commission to develop a request for proposals for the county's water master plan. The RFP was issued in September, and the Commission recommended that the Board of County Commissioners contract with Forstgrun to develop the water master plan. The scope of services included in the contract includes a robust project management and public outreach process, which will occur in partnership with the Water Commission, county staff, and the Board of County Commissioners. The master plan is broken up into various phases and tasks that will result in a water supply and demand analysis, including data collection from various water provider partners, mapping of known water-related resources, and analysis of current and planned development to better understand water demand gaps. The consultant will conduct a thorough groundwater analysis and provide information regarding water quality, aquifer conditions, and how regulatory changes may affect groundwater use. The projected timeline for the development of the plan is about two years, and the contract is not to exceed $578,360. I'm available for any questions you may have. Will Koger of Forstgrun is also here, should you have any project-specific questions. And I do see at least one Water Commission member in the audience in support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Katie. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay. Would our distinguished member of the Water Commission like to make any additional comments? Okay. Oh, there he is. Okay. Thank you for joining us, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, good. So with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
It's a real pleasure for me to bring this forward and have the opportunity to make this motion, because I think we heard, we've heard loud, well, we've heard for 15 years, forget about any time recent, perhaps even 20 years, the need for a water plan here in Douglas County. I'm really happy that we were able to get through the process, Commissioner, and get our Water Commission seated. I have enjoyed watching their work. I think we've got a good team of those who are water professionals and those who, through one way or another, have learned a lot about water, and they have an active interest in what's going on in Douglas County on the waterfront. And I think it's great that we've got it awarded. You know, Will Koger is, he's not only the principal, one of the principals for Forstgrun, but he actually happens to be a Douglas County resident. You know, I always like to point out the times when we have Douglas County residents who are recognized around the state for their expertise coming home to provide services for the public good here in Douglas County. So, Will, I'm glad you were able to get out there. I'm told there was very little bloodshed in winning this contract, so congratulations, well done. With that said, I do have a motion to approve a public contract for services between Douglas County and Forstgrun Associates Incorporated in the amount of $578,360.
And in recognition of the unanimous approval from the Water Commission, I will second that motion.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners. We have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? I'll echo those sentiments and again, acknowledge your leadership, George. It's really exciting to see this Water Commission move forward in this area that's one of the fastest-growing in the entire United States. It would be a sincere regret if we didn't advance a Water Commission and a water plan to think strategically about water over the next, not just 50 years, but over the next century. It will be critically and centrally important to our citizens long after all of us are gone. So that planning is deeply important. I do have a, I guess I should have maybe asked this during, when we were talking to staff, but I'll ask it now. Katie, is there any way to accelerate the amount of time? Two years seems like an awfully long time to get a plan.
Staff will always, this is Katie for staff, staff will always look for ways to expedite any project. So we'll work closely with Will to identify opportunities for that. That is the schedule that is projected at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. So, Will, maybe I'll call you forward and ask the same question.
We strive to under-promise and over-deliver, so the two years is an outside amount of time it would take, but I expect it will go sooner than that.
Good. Well, that's wonderful. I sincerely hope so. We often say in the county, we don't wait to do great, but I like that idea of under-promising and over-delivering. So thank you for that. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion is approved. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Will. So with that, we'll move on to Item 4D, which is a beneficiary agreement in the amount of $1 million with the Advent Health Rocky Mountain Foundation. Dan Avery, Special Projects Manager, presenting for staff. Hi, Dan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dan Avery for County Administration. It's my pleasure to introduce this request for approval of a beneficiary agreement in the amount of $1 million with Advent Health Rocky Mountain Foundation. The funds are to be used for the acquisition and installation of a Vision RT Radiation Therapy System at Castle Rock Adventist Hospital. Funds provided under this agreement are catalytic to this project and will facilitate greater access to improved cancer care in Castle Rock for residents of Central and Southern Douglas County, where this type of cancer care is not presently available. The hospital is a significant economic driver in this part of the county. Fiscal and economic benefits of this proposal were studied in an economic impact analysis produced by Arapaho Douglas Works Workforce Center as part of this analysis. The analysis concluded that the direct and indirect impact of the cancer center could result in the creation of 50 medical and surgical jobs paying $5 million in wages annually, 69 additional jobs paying similar wages, and an increase in local taxes of up to $240,000 annually. It's notable that the opportunity to provide this kind of contribution is rare. Funds for this agreement will come from the accrued interests that Douglas County has earned on its American Rescue Plan Act allocation. The award also enables an additional $1 million in matching funds from private donations. Overall, the $14 million project has raised $9 million privately. The additional $1 million provided by the county will further their goals, which they hope to complete at a fundraiser later this, later next month. This concludes my presentation. Happy to address any questions that you might have of me.
Dan, thank you for that. And do we have members of Advent Health Rocky Mountain Foundation that would like to speak today?
Hi, thanks. Hi. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for this opportunity. I'm Marcy Blair. I chaired the foundation of the hospital. I'm a cancer survivor, and I just want to say thank you. You don't know that we don't have cancer care down here until you need it. And eight rounds of chemo, 37 rounds of radiations for me, out of the community. So what you're providing here is so critical for the people who live down here, and it's not just Castle Rock, it's all of the surround. So I just want to say thank you so much for your consideration in making it a reality to bring cancer care finally down to our community. I just really say thanks. I appreciate it.
Well, ma'am, if you would indulge us, I think on behalf of the county, we'd like to congratulate you on your success and indicate that we are so thankful that you are alive and that you're using your life on behalf of other survivors. And we recognize all of the survivors in our community. I'd especially like to recognize John Seber, who has been a champion on a variety of levels for so many years, and your leadership, sir, is deeply significant to all of us. So thank you for being with us. And to all of you who brought this vision forward to us, thank you for taking the risk of asking and reminding us that, yes, there is no cancer care at the level that's needed, really no cancer care at all in this area. And so we're really pleased to- to congratulate you on your success and indicate that we are so thankful that you are alive and that you're using your life on behalf of other survivors. And we recognize all of the survivors in our community. I'd especially like to recognize John Seber, who has been a champion on a variety of levels for so many years, and your leadership, sir, is deeply significant to all of us. So thank you for being with us. And to all of you who brought this vision forward to us, thank you for taking the risk of asking and reminding us that, yes, there is no cancer care at the level that's needed, really no cancer care at all in this area. And so we're really pleased to entertain this discussion today. Any questions or comments from the board?
No questions. No questions.
Okay, so with that, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In recognition of, really, this is a huge step forward for Douglas County, and of course, no family is free from the devastating effects of cancer. We've all probably lost someone, or at least known someone close to us who has been in a battle with cancer. And when I joined the board, this is one of those exciting things that I think your leadership to my fellow commissioners really made possible before I could join the board, but it really, I think, highlights the important work that we as a board can do for the people of Douglas County. And with that recognition, I move to approve the beneficiary agreement in the amount of $1 million to the Advent Health Rocky Mountain Foundation.
So the chair recognizes that motion and would remind the public, we're honored to have Commissioner Van Winkle represent us, I believe, very soon here with regard to the ceremony honoring this important opportunity. Commissioner Teal?
Thank you. Obviously, I was really happy when the folks from Advent Health came in. John, thanks so much for kind of showing them how to pick the locks of the doors and get in here. You know, over and over again, if you come to the meetings and you hear me, you talk about the fact that I think we're becoming a community here in the county that, you know, we're ready to have these very important services. And maybe not, you know, we talked about the firefighting helicopter in that process. Here, we're talking about the means to have a cancer clinic right here in Castle Rock. And having come from a family that was touched by cancer, and my wife had to, you know, spent months shuttling my father-in-law up into the Denver area for his cancer treatments. And the fact that we can have that here now, it bolsters what we're trying to do to develop the economic kind of landscape of the county, but also it goes to reflect the fact that, listen, we've got a lot of people who live here now, and these are the kind of services we need here. And so I was super happy to see you guys come in. I was super happy that we were able to turn to our great staff to work it into the budget and make sure that this day could come. And so I'm, I'm super happy to second.
Wonderful. Well said. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
You bet. We'll see you soon.
Heck, yeah. We can apply that.
Agreed. And I wonder, Caroline, do you want a picture as well? Okay, so for the members of Advent Health, if you'd like to join us at the dais, we'll take a photo.
I know. No, we're building it.
Yeah, we are building it. I'd like to share that with you because there's a lot of good reasons for that.
I guess I'll save the photo.
I'll stand by the guy who...
Thank you for letting this day.
Yes, so it's a great way to say it.
He does it well.
Copy. One, two, three. One, two.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll be back in ten, too, so we're gonna need to know when you're leaving. Oh, that's easy.
Yeah, you gotta get this guy in or something like that, related to the grant or something. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Pretty great, right?
So many wonderful things. So with that, we'll move on to our last item on our regular agenda, which is item 4E. It's a motion for amendment of Exhibit B, Private Parking Restricted Areas, including additional locations within the county to control and regulate the movement and parking of motor vehicles on private property from ordinance 024-003, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking. Lieutenant Allen Stanton presenting for staff. Hi, Lieutenant.
Commissioners, Lieutenant Allen Stanton, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Thank you again for giving us time today to review this. I know your agenda is very busy, so thank you very much. We'll try to make this brief. What we're asking today of the Commissioners is a motion to amend Exhibit B of the Douglas County Model Traffic Code, which will amend in Exhibit B additional locations or adding of additional locations of private property that are attended by citizens within Douglas County. Most of these areas are parks within Douglas County, and one of the struggles we have right now is that these areas are not regulated unless we add them to the Model Traffic Code to allow us to enforce, in this case, traffic, i.e. parking violations by Douglas County Sheriff's Officers, or those have limited commissions to be able to charge those violations. Historically, just so the board and those that are here in attendance know, back in August of last year, we amended that Model Traffic Code with new additions from the state. They usually go anywhere from four to 10 years to change that. We amended that back in August of 2024. The way the ordinance is written in Douglas County, it allows us to modify, in this case, motion to amend, just the exhibit and not the full ordinance as a whole. And you'd ask, why would we want to do this? Occasionally, find out in areas within Douglas County, things occur, in this case, violations that are public safety issues, individuals parking in fire lanes or parking were prohibited by signs or markings, which cause those areas that our citizens enjoy, like Falcon Park or the Highlands Ranch Mansion, that when they decide to park in areas or do things that restrict fire apparatuses responding for an emergency or law enforcement getting there in a timely fashion. Those are things we want to make sure that we're able to change that behavior. Now, currently on the books, it allows us to write violations for those offenses, but it's actually a criminal offense, which is unlawful conduct on public property, which is a petty offense where a person is mandated to go to court for that violation. We believe from the sheriff's office, adding these additional areas under the Model Traffic Code and Exhibit B will allow us to enforce, but enforce on a reasonable level. And what I mean by enforce on a reasonable level, parking were prohibited, in this case, in an area not designated, is a $15 fine and a $7 surcharge. So $22 to change behavior versus going to court on a criminal offense. And so what we're asking the board today is to add these additional areas in Douglas County that will allow the sheriff's office and those the sheriff has given a limited commission to be able to write these parking violations to change behavior in these areas. Thank you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant, for that presentation. Any questions for the lieutenant?
I have none. I remember when I was in seniors, of course, this past year... And having read through this, looks like we're just continuing the process that we started then.
Correct. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you. Mr., or, sorry, Lieutenant, thank you for joining us today.
No, thank you.
I assume there'll be proper signage posted in all these new areas so that there's no surprises that citizens...
Absolutely. I actually have, which I can give to the board, some of the signs, there are traditional signs that you would see, the no parking fire lane, and I can bring that up if you'd like to give you some examples. Okay. So they are similar to what you'd see throughout the county, so those are currently signed. When we talked about unlawful conduct on public property, that's going to be the signs within those parks that say, here are the rules and regulations. And again, we want to limit and not charge that criminal charge when we can in fact charge a, in this case, a traffic infraction, which is just a penalty assessment to change that behavior.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Right. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Again, thanks so much, LT, for coming in, bringing this before us, kind of the daily grind that is county government, so thanks so much. With that said, I do have a motion to approve an amendment of Exhibit B, Private Parking Restricted Areas, including additional locations within the county to control and regulate movement and parking of motor vehicles on private property from ordinance 0-24-003, an ordinance for the regulation of traffic and parking.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. So with that, we'll move on. We're running a little bit over. We should be done at 2:30 so that we can start our public hearing, but we'll move into item five, which is citizen comments, organization comments, if time allows. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you'd state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, you'll have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any criminal comments or violent action are prohibited. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. We are a little bit past our time. I want to respect citizens that are here for our public hearing that have items to be heard before us today, but if it's okay with the board, I'd like to extend the time for our hearing today an additional 10 minutes so that citizens who are here for citizen comment can be heard. Is that okay? Okay. Commissioner? You okay with that? Okay, sounds good. So I'll open it up for citizen comment. If you have citizen comment, if you want to just come up to the podium, state your name and where you're from, we'd appreciate it.
I live in Inglewood. We've gotten to hear a lot about how important our community is to you, and that is good to hear. I'm here today with a heavy heart and a deep sense of moral outrage. The policies of denaturalization and deportation in our state are unjust, fiscally irresponsible, and a stain on our collective conscience. I don't know how you as leaders entrusted with the well-being of all Coloradans have committed to such cruel and destructive practices. Commissioner Layden, you profess to be a man of faith. Let's talk the talk. The Bible's clear. I was a stranger and you invited me in. Leviticus 1934 commands, "The foreigner residing among you must be treated as your native born." You love them as yourself. This is not a suggestion, it's a divine mandate. These policies cast out the stranger, they tear families apart, and they are endangering the vulnerable. I don't know how you in good conscience support such a blatant violation of these fundamental principles. Commissioner Teal, history buff. History warns us of the consequences of exclusion. During World War II, the Boy Scouts of America embodied service and compassion. They aided refugees and displaced people. Anne Frank's story reminds us of the cost of abandonment. Denaturalized, denied refuge, she and her family were deported to concentration camps. She died there. Her diary stands as a damning indictment of exclusion. Commissioner, the Boy Scouts showed us that even in dark times, we can choose compassion over cruelty. I hope that you'll follow their example instead of repeating mistakes of the past. Commissioner Van Winkle, formidable finance man himself, you know the numbers. Deporting one person costs just under $13,000. Mass deportations are going to cost the US economy just under $5 trillion over 10 years. These funds could strengthen our schools, healthcare, and infrastructure. Instead, they're wasted on tearing apart families and communities. I don't know how we justify this recklessness use of resources. I implore you all to look into your conscience and ask yourselves, how am I committing to this? How am I committing, how am I supporting policies that betray memorial values, waste precious resources, and repeat the darkest chapters of human history? The world's watching. History is going to judge you, and I hope that this is not the legacy you commit to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Any Commissioner response? You know, I just want to say thank you for coming, and I know it's not easy to be here in the middle of the afternoon, apart from your business work and whatever anybody else may be doing. I'll just say that, you know, as the first Latino-elected Commissioner in Douglas County, I'm deeply compassionate and very concerned about anybody that's seeking refuge and asylum in our country. That said, the numbers are stark. It has cost the state $437 million to deal with illegal immigration, and there are $1 billion in the hole. And the proposal is to take that money from kids with developmental disabilities, which isn't okay. As a fifth-generation Coloradan beckoning people to a cold-weather climate without a plan is not compassionate. We have a terrible homeless problem in Denver. Thankfully, in Douglas County, we have functional zero because our citizens take a different approach. But we can't even house the people in Denver that need the housing that are currently there. Having 40,000 Venezuelan migrants come to Denver in a year and a half is not wise. We recently saw the raid up in Adams County where there was a very significant criminal element, and we are not okay with people being trafficked. It's not compassionate for illegal immigrants who don't speak the language, young females, to be trafficked the second they get here. So respectfully, I appreciate your thoughts. I hope you'll continue to join us in the conversation. Additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
Commissioners, thank you for this time. I'm Gary Wood. I'm a resident of Perry Park, and I'm here to address camping on Sandstone Ranch open space. I have two concerns, among many. Number one is fire. Commissioners, do you recall how the Hayman Fire started? Terry Barton was a US Force Service employee. She knew the rules, okay? But she didn't follow them. People don't follow rules all the time. Consider the speeders on the Frontage Road or 105. Consider the Eagle Eagle passing on those same roads. People don't follow the rules. Some camper, if you allow this, someday will start a fire, drop a cigarette, drop a joint, but there'll be a fire over there. And when that happens, we will live with a Hayman-type disaster or an LA, and we don't want it. Are you prepared to provide 365, 24/7 supervised camping in order to make sure there are no fires there? Have you budgeted recently, I believe, close to $300,000 to mitigate on Sandstone? You know it's a high-fire area. If you are so certain that no one will ever start a fire there, would you be willing to establish a fully-funded disaster relief fund dedicated to and designated for the residents of the greater Larkspur area? Transparency, my second issue. Commissioners, I consider it both deceptive and disingenuous that you send out 107 postcards inviting people to an open house when there are 800 residents in Perry Park, and we got no, no postcards there. Why is that? Why don't you want participation from an area that borders on Sandstone? Why did you quickly change the designation from primitive camping to minimalist camping? What's the point? And most importantly, because you have a master plan you're working with, do you recognize that the proposed camping is unwanted? In the Sandstone Ranch Master Plan 2020, under the heading of "What Type of Public Activity Is Appropriate?", no one, no one listed camping. Even hunting got 1%. Why are you pushing something that no one asked for? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, sir?
My name is Ed Chambers. I live in Larkspur. My land joins the Sandstone Ranch, and I'm here to talk also about the camping on the Sandstone Ranch. In the interest of transparency and disclosure, here are my questions and concerns. Exactly how many people have requested camping? Are they all residents of Douglas County? Is camping open to everyone? Are you willing to meet face-to-face with the Larkspur Fire Protection District Chief McCauley and his command staff concerning their questions and concerns? What was the decision-making process for selecting the location for the camp sites? Do you know... Do you know you are placing the campsites within 300 yards of the location of rattlesnakes? There are rattlesnake signs right there where you've put the campsites. There's over 2,000 acres there, and yet you picked a spot that, as far as I know, is the only location where there are rattlesnakes. I think you're exposing yourself there to a problem. The location selected is a long distance from the entrance. Should a 911 call come in to LFPD for medical emergency, the extra distance to be traveled to the campsites could literally and actually be the difference between life and death. Will firearms be allowed at the campsites? If weapons are not allowed, will the supervisors, volunteers be allowed to search and pat down the campers and their packs? Will drugs and alcohol be permitted? Will there be portable toilets at the campsites? What about noise? Will there be a curfew? What time? If not, why not? We have lived on our property for 23 years. We bought the Sandstone Ranch. We have wildlife cameras set up for many years. We've recorded many bears, bobcats, and mountain lions. If campers' food is left out, campers could be in real danger of being attacked by the wildlife. Will there be an online reservation system available for the campers? If so, who pays and maintains it? Are fees going to be charged for camping? How much? Will there be onsite supervision to make sure laws are enforced? Are they authorized to expel people who break the rules? What are their hours and responsibilities? Are they paid, trained employees? Will additional funding be available for police and fire protection? Will deposits be required to pay for trash removal or damage? If fees are charged, who does the accounting, and how much does it cost to pay for it? Will statistics be kept, including the number of campers, where they're from? How many have been expelled for breaking the rules? How many injuries? Other pertinent information? Who pays for this, and how will the information be published? What are the hours of occupancy of the campsites? Is it seven days a week? Is it open all year? What is your decision criteria for deciding yea or nay on the issue? Have you already committed to doing the trial?
Sir, your time has expired. If you can wrap up for us.
If you decide to move forward with the trial, when will it start? Have you done a cost-benefit analysis for the project? I believe the costs and dangers far outweigh the benefits. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will answer all my questions and publish them so that all of our people can hear what you're saying about this and helping us understand why you're doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. I'll take two more citizens' comments, and then we'll move on so that we can have citizens hear their public hearing comments. Yes, ma'am. If you want to just state your name and where you're from.
Patricia Okersmmsick, 2964 Castle Butte Drive, Castle Rock, in the Keene Ranch. I'd like to bring up a few very brief items that have been discussed in the past and written as public record concerning the Sandstone Ranch and the current proposal for primitive camping. The Douglas County Commissioners Meeting, January 14, 2025, the subject was forest maintenance of the Sandstone Ranch presented by Ryan Smith, Land Management Specialist. Quote, "Sandstone Ranch has been identified as high risk for wildfire." Number two, Sandstone Master Plan 2020, Page 3, Park Trails and Open Space Master Plan, Objective OS 2B, Support Development of Passive Outdoor Recreational Uses Within Designated Areas, Including But Not Limited to Hiking, Bicycling, Horseback Riding, Fishing, and Other Compatible Uses of Open Space in accordance with adopted county regulations, Conservation easements, and the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Sales Tax and Use. Primitive camping, or minimalist camping, by definition, is defined as active outdoor recreation. It is not defined as passive recreation, as was specified in the master plan. The other items listed above as part of the master plan are all identified as passive outdoor recreation in compliance with the master plan. Hence, primitive camping would be not in compliance with the master plan. Page 10, Results of Public Online Survey. It was conducted August 21 to October 15 of 2018. Nowhere in this survey is there any mention of primitive camping. With the results of that survey documented in the Sandstone Ranch Master Plan of 2020, the proposal for primitive camping is a redundant act and considering that the people have already spoken. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Appreciate those comments. Yes, ma'am.
One more, right?
One more. Yeah, but I will say, every single comment matters, and if you email boccc@douglas.co.us, that will be recorded with us. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, Commissioners. My name's Kim Greer, and I live in the far south of the county, the Larkspur area. I've been in here for 53 years. Primitive camping, minimalist camping, whatever you want to call it, is not in the 2020 plan. Now, that is not that difficult to update. The TLC can do that. However, the easement, from my brief look at the easement, would need to be updated. That is not, right now, DLC has not been requested. Wondering when you are going to request that DLC does that. The easement would need to be reviewed by a conservation lawyer, and it may not be able to be updated. Right now, there are sections in there talking about if any disturbance of the property is done outside of the building envelopes and the existing and planned trails, that those areas need to be rehabilitated. I don't think that a camping area would count as an area that you're going to want to rehabilitate because you're going to want people to keep camping there. I have considerations as far as, like, the wildlife, the bears. Since this is going to be minimalist, if it occurs, that means you're not going to have installed bear boxes. So I would think that maybe a requirement would need to be on there to have bear containers if you're going to be there, because these are garbage bears. I mean, no offense to the bears, but there are houses nearby, so they're all habituated to garbage. So somebody comes and camps, they're going to be there, and I don't want dead bears. Open spaces in this county are currently dawn to dusk, unless you're going to be closing the gates off so people can't leave, which is not a security thing that you want to be doing. This is going to be a 24/7 activity, not dawn to dusk. And another aspect of this is fire. I was a volunteer with Larkspur Fire for 10 years, so I'm very aware of fire dangers. Now, I know we're saying that people can't basically have fire there, but everybody knows that that may occur. You would need to provide access to, at the minimum, a tender that could get back there and get water back there, which would require a road, which would be another thing that would point to an easement needing to be changed. So just a few things to consider, and I hope you think about those things before making further decisions. Thank you.
Ma'am, thank you so much. Really appreciate those comments. I'm going to open it up for commissioner comment, but again, I would ask each of you to please continue with us in that discussion. I think if any of you emails boccc@douglas.co.us, it'd be really valuable to us. And again, you heard it earlier, but we work for you, not the other way around, and so our job is to listen. And I just want to assure you, as chairman of this board, we will not be moving forward on anything until we actively listen to the residents of this community.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan, and my colleagues deeply care about this community. We don't want to do anything that's going to harm your way of life or impair your way of life. I think you just heard about our Wildfire Action Collaborative, which I'm honored to chair. We're the only county that has a helitack team. We are so committed to preventing wildfires. So there are a lot of details and a lot of considerations. You know, as a Coloradan, I know that citizens enjoy being outdoors. That's a priority for citizens. So finding a way for them to do that, that is consistent with the conservation easement and the values that we all share, I think is part of an ongoing conversation, but I really welcome your comments. So thank you for being here. Commissioners?
Yeah, no, I actually, you know, we are at the beginning of this process. I mean, this process literally just began, and it began with, I suppose, we should have sent invitations to more people than what we did. But that was the beginning of the, that was the beginning of the conversation, the beginning of the process. I heard a lot of good, a lot of good questions that I don't think we know the answers to yet, and I think we can work on that stuff. You know, we are committed to allowing public access to public lands. This is something we're looking at in order to add to that capability here in the county, but it's just begun. We're still kicking around. Personally, I hate the phrase "primitive camping." I hate the phrase "minimalist camping." Can I please have a member of staff please write down "leave no trace camping"? Because, you know, there are people in this county who actually have leave no trace training certificates, like one of the three people up here, actually. So I appreciate that, if we could write down "leave no trace" and start incorporating it, because I think that will address a number of the questions, and quite frankly, a number of the concerns that we're hearing.
No, it will not. They're just changing words.
And so I appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate everybody speaking out. Listen, guys, I don't want to minimalize any concerns. I know it's, these are areas that are close to your home, so this is your home we're talking about. I don't want to minimize that at all, and I look forward to us continuing the conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for all those who came today. I really don't have a whole lot to add, just because we are at such the beginning stages of this process. So a lot of the questions that were asked at the dais, those are things that we will be looking at in the weeks and months ahead. But again, just so early on in the stage of this process that, right now, it's kind of an idea that's being floated out there and not a lot of meat to it yet.
Yeah, and like I say, so we represent 400,000 citizens, and on odd years, this is my seventh year, so this is an odd year, we will do a massive countywide survey. So we're going to be asking everybody for their input. We want to hear from everybody we represent on this issue, and then drill down to the details, get really specific about all of those questions you raised. So more to come. It's early. No official decisions have been made without requiring a lot more planning. So, and we have candidly, with Dan Dirts and the rest of staff, some of the best county staff in the state, in my opinion, and I know that they are very committed, as Douglas County residents, to your quality of life. So thank you for that. Any additional commissioner comments? I'm going to move on to other business. Any other business before the board today? Okay, thank you. County manager, anything from the county manager?
Just very briefly, I know the board is joining some of the heartache that took place this last week in Highlands Ranch, where we had three young men commit suicide. I wanted to point out in the county manager report that the county does offer suicide prevention training. It's called Mental Health First Aid, and you can go to our website. It's free. It happens every month. It's a day-long. I've taken the training, and it's very helpful on how to interact with that.
Thank you, Doug. And I think it's really important to just pause and reflect on those three lives. I think we all have heavy hearts, and I know you have a heavy heart about this. I'm really proud of the three-digit mental health line that's available to anyone. It's 988, which is like 911 for mental health. So for anybody, young people, adults, that might be facing a mental health crisis, I hope you will consider using that 988 number. The whole intent of that was not to draw a lot of attention. People don't want to call 911 because you don't want cop cars and people showing up at your house over a mental health crisis. Maybe not necessarily. 988 is confidential, and it can get you those resources you need in the event of a crisis. We also have a really fantastic co-response team, including several youth co-response teams, which is law enforcement paired with a clinician that will literally go out to a crisis and address that fairly rapidly. So we're proud of that. You know, Mr. Rogers used to say, and I shared this the other day at our board retreat, that when tragedies occur, look to the helpers. And there's a lot of helpers in the mental health field in this county, and you included, Doug, that I know are very committed to mental health. So thank you for raising that for us. Anything else? Okay, well, the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 11, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. We are adjourned.